Okay, semua okay, okay.
Okay.
Hai. Hai. Okay. Hai, semua orang melihat layar saya? Bisa dengar layar saya di screen? Can you guys see my screen?
Ah boleh boleh.
Okay, just.
Hai.
Hai.
Uh just to confirm, is uh everyone here uh understand Malay or? Is there anyone here who cannot understand Malay? Just in case I, in case I.
I have difficulty in understanding.
Who's that? Who's that? Who's talking?
Sarah.
Uh Sarah, okay, okay, okay. And Tuna, alright. Not it, not it. Okay, this is we try to uh use English as much as possible. Okay, so as you can see uh in my slide, in because like in my, in this PDF. So you guys see that I have already highlighted certain words. So the yellow one is one group, the green one is one group, and the blue one is also in one group. So when you, when I look at this chart, I think uh the one who make this chart, I don't know what kind of uh. How they organize this chart, I don't know, maybe due to the stroke order, I think. Because usually if you learn Kanji, uh the textbook or the teacher will organize it. Uh according to the, according to a group, so it will be easier for you to learn. For example, the yellow one, can someone tell me, uh everyone, can someone tell me? Why I group it, I group it the yellow one? Like this, like this end, like this.
Number.
Yes, number. So I group all the numbers. So we are going to look, uh eh this one, and then we are going, first we are going to look at the yellow one first. So maybe can you guys uh try to highlight maybe the yellow one first? Uh by the way, anyone here can already learn Chinese? Already learn Kanji? Can you guys, raise your hand or something? No one? Or forgot already? Tadi eh, semua orang tak pernah belajar Kanji dulu? Or belajar sedikit-sedikit dia?
Uh.
I want to, I just want to learn.
I learned.
Oh, you, you just want to learn.
I learned elementary one, I guess.
Ah, okay, okay, sedikit-sedikit, just beginner. Oh Stephen, you are Chinese. Then I think you don't need this, so Kanji start susah for me, oh. So Stephen, for Stephen kacang already. Because this is basically Chinese characters. So yeah, yeah, so if you guys see uh this one, I give you two PDF, right? So in this one, uh you guys can learn how to write. So they, they already give the stroke order, so you guys can just practice according to the stroke order. In this one, I think you guys can learn it by yourself. So what I want to do today is we are going to learn the group one first. And then see how the reading. So macam I once mentioned before, so Kanji has how many reading? How many reading guys?
Two.
Oh, two, okay. Yes, why is it?
Onyomi and kunyomi.
Yes, onyomi and kunyomi. So which one is the original Chinese reading? I mean the one who adopted from the Chinese reading.
Onyomi.
Onyomi.
Okay, nice, onyomi. So for today, uh uh I, I want you guys to forget about the onyomi and kunyomi. And then we are going to learn the reading for like the number. We start from ichi ni sang. So because ichi, when we combine with another word, for example, su. The reading is going to be different. So what I want you guys to know first is only this reading first. Only the ichi reading first, and then later we will learn, we will add more and more reading. So first, uh I wish speaking Malay in case, um, so first, uh reading, satu reading je dulu. Eh tak perlu belajar semua sekali terus. So first I am going to teach uh reading yang first dulu, lalu baru nanti kita tambah, tambah, tambah. So makinama kita tambah, tambah, tambah. So mula-mula kita belajar ichi, ichi punya reading only. And then later we are going to learn hitotsu punya reading. Okay, so kita nak uh belajar macam, contoh, and this one ada eighty Kanji, eighty characters. We're not going to learn this in one day. Saya pun tak belajar Kanji semua ni dalam satu hari. Stephen, do you learn this in one day? Uh no, even Stephen said no. So, so you guys need to, take it step by step. So for today, we are going to learn only the highlighted ones. Hmm maybe two, masa, nanti later I, I will, I will think again. So first, this one, uh we start from this one eh, uh boleh check, you guys perlu note. Okay, this one is number one in Japan. The meaning is number one. So what is it guys? I?
Ichii.
Yes, ichi. Ichii. Okay, this one is too easy eh, ichi. So you guys can follow after me, ichi.
Ichii.
Ichii, okay, nice. So ichi, so after ichi we have? Ni. So this one is ni. If I'm going to first, tell me, yeah? So this one is ni. Ni, so ni, one, two. You guys notice that, one, two. Macam senangan, macam easy, okay. Ichii, ni, ichii one, only one line, and then ni. And then next is?
Sang.
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 Sang. So betanya, nyah, belum lagi eh, okay. Sang, ada isi gelap dengan nyah tu. Okay, ichii ni sang, ada katanya, okay. So this one is sang. Hikna sandozo, sang.
Sang.
Sang, so you guys notice, right, the N doesn't go, so if in Malay or in English, we learn the N words like san. I think in Chinese also san. So but in Japanese is sang, 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 okay. Sang, so actually, if you guys know, what is this? Stephen, can you tell me what is this in Chinese, the reading?
Yama.
Yama, this Japanese, yama is Japanese, so in Chinese is?
Shan.
Shan, okay.
Shan.
Uh, so is shang, is it right, is it right? But in Ja- uh in Japanese, they will use sang, the onyomi, the onyomi. So sebab tu, kita nak ajak lagi. This one, nanti dulu. So this one also sang. Okay, sang, after sang, we have number four. So this is number four, yeah? So why is it called?
Yon.
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 So number four is actually a bit special, it has another reading too.
Shi.
Yeah, she. Yong, kenapa, peni tak best? Oh, baca lah. So young. Atapun, she. So macam mana nak decide uh which? Perbunyi tu, nanti you guys will know. Young and she. So usually in counting, we use she, like ichi ni sang, she, go, roku, that are. So she, this one is young or she eh, young or she. For example, we use, we want to count uh month, April. So we, we are not going to say young gatsu, we say she gatsu, she gatsu, she gatsu. I think in Chinese it's su. If my Chinese knowledge is still there, it's su. Yeah, yeah, okay, interesting. So you guys can stick ketchup. Oh, oh no, sunshine, okay, okay. Okay, semua stay okay?
Ah, five.
Ah, so after young or she, we have five, right? So this is five. Who knows how to pronounce it?
Go.
Go.
Yes, go.
Go.
Go. Ichii, ni, sang, she, go. Yes, go, okay, nice. So we have go. So after go, we have?
Raku.
Okay, roku, roku kat bawah. So roku, roku. So you guys, if you guys write roku, make sure to not flush. This line and this line does not flush this one up. So must have space. Okay, so roku. Roku, okay, this one is roku. Ichii, ni, sang, she, go, roku. Okay, so after that, we have seven. Where is seven?
Nana.
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 Shichi.
Shichi.
So nana or shichi? Nana or shichi? Anyone here name nana? Is that it? I don't think so. Yes, no nana here. Okay, nana or shichi. Okay, so question, or they say love to ask question. Eh to. Uh diha. Diha, what is five in Japanese? Bihasan. If you can answer right on the, right in the chat, if you can open your mic. Kedihah, takut nak jawab. Okay, okay. So who, who want to answer? What is five in Japanese?
Go.
Go.
Go, yes, go. Five in Japanese is go. Okay, how about three?
Sang.
Sang.
Okay. Uh okay. Eh to, Finda, oh Finda kat the mic eh, okay, okay. Daniel, Daniel sang. Uh Mike, okay. Daniel, Mike, okay deska? Hanasemaskah? Boleh cakap? Can you speak, Daniel?
Right.
Right, okay. So can you count from one to seven? Because we have learned seven, right? So can you count from one to seven? Try, try. Ichii? Eh, if you do Daniel's. Okay, Daniel. Can you guys hear Daniel? Because I cannot.
Oh.
Cannot. No, okay, okay, okay. Maybe Daniel has internet connection problem because just now, she can, oh, Arvin also have internet problem, okay, okay. It's okay, it's okay, I actually recorded this session, so if you, uh if you guys know it, it's okay. Uh me too. Oh, have internet problem, okay, okay. Okay, who doesn't have internet problem here?
Atashi.
Atashi.
Oh, atashi, okay, biasa lah, okay.
Atashi.
Sarah, can you try from one to seven? Count from one to seven.
Sensei.
Oh, Daniel, you can speak now. It's okay, Daniel, after this, can Sarah speak first? Ichii ni?
Ichii, ni, sang, si, go, roku, nana.
Okay, interesting, okay, iisne, iisne, okay, good job. Okay, so uh Daniel, can you speak now? Oh, now Daniel has disappeared again. So maybe internet connection at Daniel is. Weak, because maybe, okay, Daniel, now you can, you can speak now, okay? Because I can.
Start to say.
Ah, okay, okay, can, uh, what is it from one to seven in Japanese? Count. Ichii? Internet eh, lebih lambat aku sampai kat Daniel. Hmm, seseorang suka jadi agi cakap.
To my sense, sensei.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Kiko emas ka?
Oh, kiko emas, Arvin, kiko emas. I can hear you.
Aye.
Right. So I think Daniel has internet problem now. It's okay, Daniel, it's okay, it's okay. You can check right on the chat. Okay, who, who else want to try? Uh only one, no person. Who wants to try? Oh, atashi, dozo.
Ichii, ni, sang, si, go, roku, shichi.
Okay, iisne, suge, okay. So you guys can now memorize until seven. So next we have number. Eight, hachi. Hachi. So we have ha. Hachi. So this is eight, just uh same with the number six. Uh this one does not touch, and then. Uh benapa in line ni? So this one line must be lagi tinggi skelup. Dari pada sing. So hachi. So this one is because of phone, dia kan pakai phone han, so sebab tu dia ada macam, ada macam ni kan. So actually sebenarnya bila you guys tulus, tak ada lah macam ada macam tu pun, just like this lah kalau tulus, hachi. Hei lau sikit, dia pada sensor. Eh, hachi, okay, hachi, this one, okay. So after eight, we have nine. Who knows what? In Japanese.
Cute me.
Cute.
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 Semua tahu, if you guys watch Naruto, eh Naruto ada berapa?
Ada ten.
Juu.
Oh juu, juu being, oh, eh bukan sembilan eh, kan tuju?
Ada, ada lagi sepuluh, eh ada lagi sepuluh, ah lagi satu.
Sebelas.
Tak, tak, eh. Ada ke? Ad- ada sepuluh ke? Ada sepuluh, yang baru ni.
Ada sepuluh.
Oh, ada sepuluh.
Oh, yang kat Boruto tu han. Ah, ada kat Boruto tu.
Wah, you guys still watch Naruto eh? But actually, I, I, I watch it uh on TV, Tiga. Then have Naruto, you know, every dekat-dekat magrib. So interesting, this is so cute.
Oh, yeah.
Uh reading which is ku. So ku.
Let.
So ku, tidak. No, satu tu. So we have, uh have another reading which is ku. For example, like I said before, if we use September, now is August, so hachigatsu, hachigatsu. So gatsu means month. So nanti later you guys, I, I will teach you, what, how, how the Kanji looks like. So gatsu, hachigatsu, August, hachigatsu is August. But when we use uh next month, which is, kita tak get the ku gatsu. We don't say ku gatsu, we say ku gatsu, ku gatsu. So actually ni, uh can I memorize, there are certain words when we combine the Kanji, it will become ku. The reading will become ku, not ku. Must be, must be jam. Ku, okay. So for now, ku, ante ku, okay. So last, we have ten. Ten is actually quite one of the easiest Kanji to write. Who knows where is ten? The only. Where is ten? Uh. Hmm, hmm, pink, uh, I like taking in yellow color. Which one? Which part?
The T symbol.
Oh, the, oh, yes.
Third line.
Uh the T symbol, solid symbol, the plus sign, the plus sign. So here, so what do we call this?
Juu.
Juu.
Juu. Juu.
Juu.
So for example, all of, a lot of you guys are in your. Uh elementary school, elementary school, eh tak diken, uh I mean in high school. So ju young side, ju sang side. Ju go, ju roku. Okay, so now we have learned until ten. All the Kanji till ten, until ten. So can someone tell me how to count from one to ten? Anyone want to try?
Kinisen.
Watashi.
Watashi, hi, who is watashi? Arvin?
Uh.
Okay.
Aru.
Dozo.
Yes. Ichii, ni, sang. Uh si.
Hmm?
Go, roku, uh nama.
Hmm?
Uh, hachi.
Hmm?
Ku, ju.
Ku, ju.
Ku, ju.
Okay, so actually then, if you guys use she, the nana, you guys must use shichi. Dia macam say, ichii, ni, sang, si, go, roku, shichi, hachi, ku, ju. If you guys use young, ichii, nana. Eh, sensei will confuse, like, ichii, ni, sang, young, go, roku, nana, hachi, ku, ju. Okay? Okay, so actually then, ala-alang then, should we learn numbers or numbers later? Numbers later lah, numbers later lah, numbers later. Ke, fakta belajar sekarang, sensei also confused.
It's up to you, sensei.
Uh, it's up to me, right? So I think, later lah, later lah. So but I want to make like quiz, you know? For example, I give, I'll give you guys a number and I want you guys to answer me what the number is in Japanese. So I think later lah, later. So cute, uh today we are just going to learn Kanji. Okay, so now all the yellow one, eh belum lagi, yeah, yeah, yeah. So after ju, if you guys learn number. For example, we want to say uh thirty, we say. We, how we do it in Japanese, lebih kurang, like in Malay, we add three and then ten. How we pronounce it lah? So three is sang. And that is, what is guys? Ju.
Juu.
So it becomes sang ju. So semua ni sama je for others, for others. For example, ninety, ninety is also the same. So for ninety, we have what? Nine, nine plus ten, right? So nine is?
Ku.
Ku, and then? Ten is?
Juu.
Juu. So ku ju, ku ju, so ku ju is ninety. How about, okay. How about ninety-nine? So nine.
Ku ju, ku.
Yes, so nine plus ten plus ku again. Ku ju. Ku, oh like learning mathematics, ah, ku ju ku. So that's how you pronounce it. But when hundred. Okay, when hundred, we say? Oh.
Hyaku.
Yes, that's right. So when, uh where is the Kanji for hyaku? The yellow highlighted one. This one, so af- beside hachi, beside hachi, right? So hyaku. So you guys don't be confused with this one now. This one later we will learn after this one. Don't be confused with this one. Okay, if you guys notice, this one ada macam like uh yokosan, hmm. Yokosan, it means garisan melintang atasnya. But this one doesn't have. Okay, so don't be confused. So this one is hyaku. So hyaku, hyaku means hundred eh. Doesn't necessarily mean one hundred, so it's just a counter for hundred. For example, one, what if one hundred in Japanese? So ichii? Ichii hyaku tak ada eh, so dia terus hyaku. So is, is it like the same way Chinese, I think? Uh how to uh counter hyaku? So for example, we have, uh let's say, two hundred. Two hundred is ni hyaku, ni hyaku. So hyaku, so hyaku already mean hundred. Yes, 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 correct, correct, correct. So this one is hyaku. Don't be confused with this one, this one later we will learn. So hyaku, so if we have hundred, then we must have thousand. So thousand is? How to read this? Anyone know? Yes, that's right, sen. Sen, sen, sen. So if you guys know, duet Jepun and senyen, senyen, one thousand yen. Yan, yan is uh Jepun punya duit eh. For example, we have Malaysian, we have ringgit. Uh US, we have US dollar. So in Japanese, in Japan is yen. So sen, sen, sen is one thousand eh, sen is one thousand. Okay, so I think I tak the miss any Kanji for number. I think all of these are Kanji for number. Oh, but I add, so ni, nanti, nanti. Ji, okay. Okay, okay. So I want to ask question, see, I love asking question. Yes, yen is Japanese currency, okay. Um, sensei pick, ah, atika? Atika, atika sang? Right, okay. What is um one hundred in Japanese?
It's hyaku.
Eh ichii tak payah eh, dia hyaku, uh, dia ni emang the hundred terus. So what? So hyaku. Okay, iisne, hyaku. Uh farah, farahanin. What is one thousand in Japanese? Eh, farahnis?
Sumimasen.
Uh, okay, okay. Iisne, iisne, daikobu desu. So what is one thousand in Japanese? You still remember?
No, can't remember.
It's okay, it's okay. The answer is in this, uh in the screen, on the screen. How to say it?
Sen.
So sen, sen, sen eh. If you guys tak sempat ketchup bagi tahu sensei, sensei can be a bit laju sometimes. So sen, so now we have ichii. So we have ichii. And then we have ni. And then we have sang. And then we have young or she. And then we have go. And then we have roku. And then we have nana or shichi. And then we have hachi. Then we have ku. Mana ku? Deng, mana ku? Where is the ku? It's tak jumpa di diba. Lalu sisi tak se.
The, the one.
Where, 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 where?
below ichii.
Below ichii, yes, this one, so ku. Or sometimes it can also be uh pronounced as, like as ku. And then we have. Dora makan. And then we have ju. And then we have ju. And then hyaku and sen. Okay, okay. So last question before we move on, we move on to another highlighted color. Eh to. Ainol, ainol?
Hi, sensei.
Hi, okay. This one. This Kanji.
Young.
Young or?
Young or uh she.
Yes, young or she, okay.
Hai.
Okay, Syaikh tadi angkat tangan. Eh to, this one.
Shichi.
You sure?
Uh.
This one is number six, number six.
Oh, roku, roku.
Yes, roku, okay, nice. Then Alexa, Alexa Aristia. Okay, can you uh open your mic? Can you turn on your mic, Alexa? Okay, okay. Uh Furakawa, Elise Furakawa. Interesting.
Hai.
Okay, this one?
Juu.
Okay, nice, juu. Okay, Audrey. Eh to, this one. Audrey, can you turn on your mic?
Hi, uh ni.
Ni, okay, nice. Then last one, Azia.
Hai.
Hai, this one?
Uh, go this.
Yes, go this. Okay, so everyone, okay, for Kanji for the yellow one, so next we move on to. Hmm, the green one. So the green one, actually selalu juga bunyi. So this, who knows what the green one stand for? Other seven, I think. One, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, seven, eight, oh, I put eight lah, eight. What is it? Uh minus this, minus this one, the rest, what are the rest? Anyone know?
Anyone?
Get to your be, to your be. Element, so actually element quite right, hmm, yes. But if.
Days, name of days.
The days.
Yes, the days. Yes, the days. Okay, direction, okay, not quite true, days, is days, eh? Hari, eh, hari. Okay, so first we have Monday. Monday is get suyo bi, get suyo bi. Getsu, we use this one, getsu. Okay, if we use with yobi, it's get suyo bi. But so it's, it means Monday, but what if? I use only this Kanji.
Sukki. It's mean moon.
So moon, eh? Sukki, okay, Tsukishima, eh, if you guys watch Haikyuu, eh, Tsukishima, uh, sukki, this Kanji, sukki. Eh, to, so if you guys, you've noticed, eh, masa Sensei bagi, uh, the PDF, so the question tak ada dah pula. Nen, kumi nama i, gatsu, kata ni. So I have another one, yang, detusitain, yang Hiragana punya practice chat tu. Kalau Sensei tak dengar ni? Akal, ah, correct. So someone asked me, what does this mean? So this one is gatsu, right? Gatsu, so this one, mind. So, same Kanji as study. So gatsu can mean a lot, for, so for this one, you guys tabi belajar. So only for this Kanji, we have three reading, with a, with a totally different meaning. For example, kita tambah. Eh, wah, wait, 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 eh. No, tak boleh delete. So we learn the Kanji for this one, right? So if we add yobi. Yobi, so we will read this as get suyo bi, get suyo bi, which means Monday. Get suyo bi, anything yang add yobi means days, eh? Yobi. So get suyo bi, but so you guys must have heard this a lot, uh, suki ga kire desne. Have you guys heard of this phrase? Suki ga kire desne.
Yes.
Yes. So the moon is very pretty today, so actually this line, uh, suki, uh, moon. Kire means pretty, eh? Or beautiful, uh, berilah duduk. So this one, they actually a phrase, uh, inside, uh, Naksumi Sosekis book. Uh, quite popular, so it's like, uh, one of the way of confess, confession. Suki ga kire desne, so just, you know, pick up line, pick up line. Suki ga kire desne, so this one is suki, suki ga kire desne. And then another one, we have, uh, four month, eh, to, gatsu. So now we have Hachi Gatsu, right? Hachi Gatsu. Hachi Gatsu or the Kanji, Hachi Gatsu. But this one we pronounce as gatsu, bukan getsu. So Hachi Gatsu, so this one is August. So anything yang plus gatsu ni? So for example, another one, and we have, seven, we don't say nana gatsu, eh? We say shichi gatsu. Ada juga orang pronounce nana gatsu, it says, but, uh, the most used one is shichi gatsu. Shichi gatsu, so this one is, uh, what is it, guys? Bulan tuju? July. So, okay, okay, so we have suki, okay, we have get suyo bi. So after Monday, we have Tuesday. So Tuesday?
Suyo bi.
Tu- Tuesday, Tuesday.
Kayobi. Kayobi.
Yes, kayobi, mana pula Kanji Tuesday, ah, okay. Kayobi, okay, this one actually very interesting, eh, this Kanji, okay? So macam someone said earlier, element, so actually, eh, this days, same with the Korean one. I know, I think the Korean one is the same, Chinese, I'm not sure. Chinese, I think, use another version like chi, ching, ti, I'm not sure, I'm not sure. Uh, yes, I think Chinese, Chinese use same, oh, Chinese use same, oh, okay, okay, so very easy for you guys, eh? So actually, it can also mean elements too, so just now we have kayobi, we have kayobi, right? Ka plus yobi. So this one is ka. So this one, when kayobi, we, we, is Tuesday. But this Kanji, can also be pronounced as he. So when we pronounce it as he, it means elements, what elements do you guys think?
Fire.
Fire.
About time, fire, water, bender semua tu, okay, fire, he. Okay, interesting, okay, ni actually, you guys, kalau you guys belajar Kanji, when we combine, this Kanji and another Kanji, this one actually has Kanji, Kanji, but Sensei tak letak Kanjila. So, I think, and when we combine with another Kanji, usually, if you read it, this Kanji, we, we, we read, kita akan baca as ka. But when they stand alone, he, for example, another, ka. Dia tak boleh, eh? Ka punya dia. Ka. So you guys can say, when I write ka, terus keluar api, so ka. Letaklah, jadi, kaji, yes, kaji. Kaji. So kaji, this Kanji, so nanti, later you guys will learn. So if, uh, you guys actually kun, uh, onyomi, so ka. So this one is read as ka and ji, kita takkan panggil hiji. Hiji tak ada, kaji, so this is how you learn a Kanji. Join ya, you guys can still follow, kan macam, alamat, tak payah, susah. Can still follow? Again, okay, so, okay, so, take it easy, take it easy, how about Hokage Sensei? Hokage? I don't know lah, Hokage? Hokage? This one, I think, Hokage? Is this the right Kanji for Hokage, but Sensei tak tahu tu?
It's that.
This one, oh, sih, hmm, interesting, Hokage, this one? Oh, interesting, interesting, so Hokage means that, dia boleh control apa, api and bayang? Oh, yes. So this one is Hokage, interesting, eh? Hmm, interesting, is it also don't know, ah, so this is Kanji for Hokage, later Sensei will, eh, check. So this one, eh, tak payah, madirasi dah. Okay. Okay, so that is for kayobi, okay, questions? Uh, minasang wa, get suyo bi, suki deska? Do you guys like get suyo bi, Monday?
No.
No, iye, uh, suki de warimasein.
Muri.
Muri, okay, naze deska, doste deska, why?
Monday blues.
Monday.
Mama.
Mama, oh, nice, ada orang cakap mama, interesting, eh, okay, if I, if I ask you a question, and then you macam, hmm, biasa-biasa je, mama. Bukan mama, eh? Bukan mama, mama, mama. Masa Sensei bukan mama, your mother, mama, mama. Letak, mama, mama desne, mama, okay, interesting, okay, okay. Okay, so kayobi is Tuesday, so next we have Wednesday. Wednesday is element of water.
Suyo bi. Suyo bi.
Right, suyo bi, okay, sesiap nada before this end, is onyomi, water. Mana water Sensei? Oh, this one, so sui or mizu? Mizu and mizu water, sui when we add with another Kanji, same with ka, so sui yobi. Plus yobi. Sui. So Wednesday is sui yobi. But below, only this one? Right, who can read this? Mizu o? Mizu o nomi.
Nomimas.
So I.
Nomimas.
So this one is drink, eh? Mizu o nomimas. So drink ni selalunya, oh, drink lah, so mizu ni selalunya memang water yang, water lah. Jam, aim liru ni, mizu nomimas. Okay, nice, 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 sui, sui yobi, so if you guys saw another Kanji, eh? Can you say it, sui, if we add with another Kanji at the back, usually, we, uh, read it as sui yen. So let's say, I have this one. So this one also add with another Kanji, so this one is also sui, sui. And then this one is do, sui do. We just, uh, omake, omame, mame shisiki. Sui do. Okay, so for now, still okay, ah? And then we have Thursday. Element of what, guys? Element, what element?
Moku.
Moku.
Yes, what element? Wood?
Tree.
Wah, darah.
Tree.
Yes, that's right, hafiz, tree, yes, element of tree, oh, kita boleh, panggil tree ni, oh, ada di, oh, okay, okay, dosa-dosa, ada class, okay, okay, no problem. If you guys have class, oh, pelik, ya, you guys class apa ni tengah-tengah malam ni? Ada, ada orang ada katanya dia di class, oh, interesting, class tengah malam ni? Okay, ataupun ki. So ki ni tree, moku, tree ni, kalau kawan tahu kan, tree, of course lah, dia, uh, wood. Bukankah macam tu, ya, cara diri dia, okay. Okay, so ku, tree, element of wood lah, kiranya, hmm. Oh, kelas ganti, wow, kelas ganti, so we have moku yobi. So moku yobi. Moku yobi. Moku. So this one is Thursday. So this is element of tree, which is element of wood lah, sebab pokok is wood, is kayu, eh? So pokok, ki, kalau Kanji ni je, ki. Ki. Selalunya tree. Tanto? Eh, ki no shita ni, uh, nemas. Chita under, uh, sleep under the tree. Ki no shita ni nemas. So nemas, usually Jepun punya, uh, grammar, uh, work kat belakang. Jata gohan o sade mas. Uh, mizu o nomimas. Nemas, belakang. Okay, so ni boleh follow, three? Three, moku yobi, moku yobi. Okay, next we have Friday. Which one, Friday?
Kin yobi.
So kin yobi, kin. Apa lagi yang boleh pronounce guna this Kanji? Who knows?
Kanek.
I like this Kanji the most.
Kanek.
Kanek.
Okane.
Yes, okane, kalau kita tambah u, dia jadi okane kat depan, eh? So for now, only kanek. Wah, darah tak boleh join, eh? Napa tak boleh join? Li, tak boleh buka, why? Sensei also, later Sensei will check the group. Okay, okay, so kanek.
Kalau yang ini tak tahu.
Ah, sabutu. Then we have, okay, skin. Flash yobi. Kin yobi, so Friday. Kin yobi, or when we use Hiragana, o, and then, okane. So this one is money. Minasan okane, okane ga suki deska?
Suki des.
Wow, suki.
Hai.
Daesuki des.
Yes.
Daesuki desne, Sensei mo suki des. Okay, so this one, okay, so anybody do it, what element is this? Who knows?
Goal.
Yes, kin also means goal, eh? Kin, kin also means goal, yes, so for example, Olympic, right? Kin, kina apa guys? Apa ni? Kin?
Medal.
Medar.
Yes, medar, so kin medal. Means gold medal, darah play, eh? Kin medar, tapi tak cakap pula, gordo medar. Itu, uh, itulah the unique thing, uh, about Japanese punya bahasa. So you have kin and we have, uh, Kanji and then we have, uh, katakanah, kin medar. Normal, eh, normal, you guys can see the combination of Kanji and Hiragana, Kanji and katakanah. Normal, normal, so kin medar is gone, gold medal. So unfortunately, eh, we Malaysia cannot get, uh, gold medal by, later, I think, can, in Paris. Who submit, uh, who apply for the, you know, volunteer for Paris Olympic? Anyone want to try? Anyone want to try for Paris, uh, Olympic two thousand twenty-four, I think? Tada, there's someone I try. Underage, semesti underage, oh, not yet.
Cannot, foto.
Oh, cannot, oh, dah try, wadah, tahap, why? In Paris, eh? Oh, interesting, eh? Twenty, two thousand twenty-four, eh? Dang, masa tu korona dah habis belah, I don't know. So, so today is kin yobi, so today is kin yobi. Okay, so tomorrow, ashta, ashta, ashta means tomorrow. Ashta is? Do yobi, do yobi means Saturday.
Do yobi.
Okay, which one, guys? Siapa yang boleh chonteng? You guys can chonteng, you guys know, right? Do yobi, which one?
Beside me.
Beside?
Me.
Me, okay, artimas, this one, yeah? Do. Do, so for now, we learn the word do duduk lah, di, there, masa lain again, so you guys know this do? Uh, what element is this?
Earth.
Apa dia?
Yeah.
Can hear you?
That.
Yeah, uh, sorry, eh, tata, eh? So do, do yobi, do yobi, oh, nampak Sensei guna semua warna merah, huh? Do yobi. Do yobi, kalau makbur. Do yobi. Hey, you guys can be careful, eh? Uh, when you guys write this Kanji, make sure this one lagi kecil from this one. If not, it will become another Kanji. Uh, this one, Kanji lain now, who knows what Kanji is this, walaupun kecil? Siapa tahu? So, yes, 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 atas kecil, bawah panjang, you guys know what Kanji is this? If I add another Kanji kat depan? Yeah, Sensei bagi hini, she, siapa tahu? Boleh check design dia, eh? Wakarimasen. Okay, wakarimasen. Okay, Sensei bagi.
Aikat.
Sensei bagi hina, Sensei buruk lah, kah? Bushi, who knows? Why is this? Yes, samurai, yes, 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 samurai, so bushi, so that's why you must be careful, uh, with how you write your Kanji. So bushi means, this one is samurai, eh? This is another Kanji, so this is Saturday. Saturday. Right? Okay, last, we have Sunday. Where is, is Sunday? Nichi yobi. Yes, hafiz, wah, macam tu sekali tu. Yes, that's right, nichi yobi. Okay, nichi. What element is this? Anyone know?
Sun.
Yes, sun. How do you pronounce suns in Japanese? Seri eh, pada tayo, tayo, dia dia ada kanji eh, tayo, sun.
Jo.
Saya sebagi hin, Hinata. Which one? Dalam kanji Hinata tu ada.
He.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. He, okay, he. He eh? So he, dia maksud sun eh, sun. So we have nichi yobi. First, we have nichi yobi. So nichi yobi is Sunday. And can also means he is in the sun. So for example, Hinata eh. Hinata, kanji Hinata tak selesai sensei macam ni. Hinata. Namanya, nama Hinata punya kanji, Hinata. Interesting eh, namanya Hinata sun. Sebab tu dia macam akarui. Sun and fire. Or jitsu. Yes, so, 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 yes, that's right Stephen. So another way of saying this one. So actually, this, this kanji ada banyak sebutan now. Another sebutan is jitsu, eh, jitsu and also can also mean another kanji. So now, today's is what? Ju sang. Ju sang nichi. Ju sang nichi. So maksudnya, tiga belas hari bulan, tiga belas hari bulan. But. How about this one? Satu hari bulan. How do you guys, how do you guys think the reading will be?
Suitachi.
Yes, suitachi. So. That's why kanji is very interesting in Japanese. So I think in Chinese, this one is only means. Only this, right? Yeah, the reading is only re, re, I think that's how it's pronounced, re. But in Japanese, dia ada banyak reading. So for example, this one is suitachi. How about this one? So this one satu hari bulan eh, this one satu hari bulan. Then we have dua hari bulan. Who knows how to pronounce this?
Futsuka.
Yes, tiba-tiba futsuka. Tiba-tiba dia jadi ka. And then we have sang, sang nichi, eh, tak, kita panggil tak nichia, kita panggil. Mikka. So that's why, eh, kanji is very interesting. Batu dia sekali tu belajar in groups. For example, nichi yobi, kita belajar nichi yobi dulu. Belajar nichi yobi dulu, yang ni dan ti dia. Okay, teu kau tengok hiragana. Perasan tak kasihnya dia nichi. So kalau minat sam belajar begini, hari ni. So we have hachi gatsu. Apa guys? Ju.
Ju sang nichi.
So, ju sang nichi. Hachi gatsu, ju sang nichi. So tadi eh. Hachi gatsu, ju sang nichi. Tetapi pering pering kita belajar dulu yang this. So now kita dah belajar semua this. Okay, can someone count from Monday to Sunday for sensei?
Do you mean like pronouncing?
Yes, from gechi yobi to, eh, to Sunday, in Japanese.
Okay, I would like to try.
Okay.
Yes. Do, tayo bi, si. Kin yobi, moku yobi, do yobi, and also nichi yobi. Hello?
Yes, eh, boleh, boleh nak, hikai mas yo. We, we, we can hear you. Everyone can hear pura kawasan, right? Cuma just tadi macam. Eh, terputus-putus sikit.
Gak fajr next, tak tega.
Ah, yeah, yeah. Okay, iii des ne. Okay, there's something I can try. Anyone else want to try from Monday to Sunday? Tada. Ah, okay, let me see. Nuring, we have two Nuring. Eh, Nuring Shira, can you speak? Can you turn on your mic? Boleh buka mic. Tak boleh? Okay, siapa yang boleh buka mic? Eh, Mike. Hannah.
Okay.
Okay, Florence, you can, okay, dozo.
Ah, okay, I try. Um, getz yobi, ka yobi, sui yobi, moku yobi, kin yobi, do yobi, nichi yobi.
Yes, iii des ne, suvarasi. So, getz yobi, sui yobi. Eh, getz yobi, ka yobi, sui yobi. Moku yobi, kin yobi, do yobi, nichi yobi. So that's all from, eh, Monday to Sunday. And then I group another kanji. Sebab macam ni di korang, this one. This one also has, eh, quite a lot of reading. Anyone know how to read this? This means year. Year, we have apa?
Nen.
Yes, nen. And then another one, to, start from to.
Toshi.
Yes, toshi, toshi. So dua-dua means the same thing ah, year. Tahui, sebab tadi we have learned nichi is hari. So nichi is hari. Hari, day. And then we have gatsu. Or gatsu kalau kita tambah, sang gatsu, which is month, mana pula, month, okay. And then we have. Eh, nen toshi. So how to differentiate between using nen ni? So for example, eh, koto shi, okay, ni yang pelik ini je punya, koto shi. So koto shi. Koto shi means this year. So this time, eh, so this one, kita pronounce as koto shi. Koto shi, this, eh, ni kanji ni kanji imam. Now, now, karen, koto shi, koto shi this year. Okay, koto shi. So this year is apa guys? Dua ribu? Oh, kalau minggu, konshu. Yes, betul. Adalah begitu, kalau minggu konshu. So later we will learn that kanji, shu macam kat dia dah kami. Itu dah sejujurnya dah kami. But this one saya tak bulatkan. Okay, so koto shi this year, but eh. We two thousand twenty one, right? Two thousand. Two thousand twenty one. How do we pronounce this? Who knows how to pronounce this?
It's a nijuichi.
It's a nijuichi. Ichi what? Ichinen. So this one, kita guna nen. Kita tak kata. Ni sen nijuichi toshi. No, no, no. We said ni sen nijuichi nen. So tadi kita dah belajar senen. You guys still remember? Ni. Sen. Niju. Ichi nen, ichi nen. Maksudnya, this one, eh, year lah, year. Or in kanji, we use ni sen. Niju. Ichi. So actually, kalau dia kat Jepun, even dia kat Jepun, eh, if we use, eh, if. Jarang jugalah kita guna kanji for, eh. U, umur, bukan umur, apa namanya? Number. Usually we just use, cerita kalau tari pun. Eh, kita guna macam ni lah. Saya bagi contoh, cerita, for today, we have. Hachi gatsu, ju sang nichi. So kita tak tu, kita tak guna kanji eh, hachi gatsu, ju sang nichi kita tak guna kanji, we just terus guna number. Hachi gatsu, ju sang nichi. So I think the same thing with other language tu kut. Macam kita belajar mulai, we don't, kita tak tulis sen, kita tak ada tulis. Dua ribu. Dua ribu, mana ada orang tulis dua ribu, dua puluh dua puluh satu tak ada eh? Semua orang tulis dua ribu dua puluh satu je.
Mak.
Yes, yes. Kita terus guna number. Kalau nak practice, boleh je guna ni. Okay, interesting. Betul macam foundation eh. Oh, so, okay, so macam this, this chat yang saya sebagi ni. How, how do you guys pronounce this? So ichi, kita dah belajar eh, ichi. This one? This one kita dah belajar, baru tu belajar. Nen or toshi, yes. Nen. Eh, kenapa kanji se? Hiragana se lain ni, nen. Ichinen, so je ni se. Ichinen se, so maksudnya. Eh, first year.
Year.
Yes, first year. Eh, ni for show gakko, show gakko means primary school. So I think, boleh tanya eh, you guys dah belajar semua ni. Cool, cool. Biru ni, cerita saya se terlalu banyak untuk hari ni. So today we just learn this one for the. So later we will learn, that, kenapa? We quote, pardon. So later we will learn the, apa ni? The purple one and the blue one. Okay, so you guys have any question for now?
Yeah. Nay des. Um, Rasha-san, I have question.
Yes, dozo.
Um, like, I want to practice my kanji in writing, but not is writing using pen, but typing. So how can I change my keyboard from hiragana to katakana or?
Okay, okay. So you use, eh, apa? Android or?
Android.
Android? So actually, eh, sensei once create a video about it, jadi kita tengah. Sensei tak ingat, cerita, kudasa. I have the video actually. Hmm, let me see, eh, let me go to.
Because I want to sharpen my katakana and kanji, but then it's just no hiragana.
Yeah, actually, I, I know why. Because when you, eh, insert the keyboard, eh, you need, you need to put the setting to romaji. Let me show you eh. Because I don't have Android with me now. Eh, let me show you the TikTok video, but we, I post eh, I chagi. Eto, where is my TikTok? Cerita, kantik kudasai. Give me one minute. Tadah lah, one minute. Eto, eto. Keyboard, keyboard. Baiklah, video. Ah, yeah, this one.
How to write Japanese?
What one? So this one is for iPhone now. The iPhone, I think, can skip, can skip. Next, 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 next. Okay, so this one is Android, okay. Eh, okay, telan-lan ju. Okay, so you go to Android, you go to setting, go to manage keyboard. Add a keyboard, choose Japanese. Okay? And then, when you put, eh, when you choose the layout, use Q W E R T Y layout, eh? Okay, tambah, tambah. So Japanese. Yes, this one. So actually, bila you add Japanese, eh, the default, the twelve keys. Twelve keys eh, usually Japan, eh, Japanese akan guna this, this key.
Susah double ski.
Tak guna ni.
I currently use twelve keys.
Kita tak guna ni, kita tambah Q W E R T Y ataupun handwriting. So handwriting tu actually quite useful lah, eh, if you guys want to practice your, apa tulis tulis tu. So actually ni tak ada kaya so yang macam handwriting tu. So sensei quite jealous lah dengan Android sebab ada benda tu. Okay, contohnya. Tambah. This is a test je untuk adik sensei punya ni. So this one, so now you can choose. Eh, kanji or hiragana or katakana. Oh, lama sekali.
Oh, hi.
Eh, kalau guna dua belas key tu memang empat lah, sensei pun tak guna dua belas key.
Eh, saya guna dua belas key punya.
Okay.
Saya.
Tapi, tanya, tanya, saya tadi, sensei pun tak pasai.
Atashi, Alice, pura kawares.
Okay. No problem, boleh? If not, I can.
Thank you.
Eh, I can share the link. Oh, ada eh, tak boleh tukar eh. Sensei pun tak sure. Okay, eh, so who's someone ask me tadi?
Hi.
Okay, settle now the problem?
Yes. Problem is settle.
Nice. Eh, not me, okay. Anyone else? I have a question? Yes, kalau typo terus lari maksud. So actually, orang semuanya macam zaman sekarang eh. Actually, kalau tak payat, kalau your, eh. Apa namanya ni? You guys just learn Japanese macam like this eh, macam J P T ke apa eh? Tak payat perhatikan, tapi sebab sekarang semua type eh. So because now everyone just type the kanji, even Japanese. Japanese themselves, eh, forget quite a lot of kanji, how to write them. Because, eh, sekarang ramai guna type je, jarang tulis. Macam they can read, but they, they forgot how to write. Eh, so boleh tukar eh, boleh tukar. Kalau guna dua belas tu macam quite difficult lah sebab dua belas punya layout tu, dia actually follow garake, garake smartphone. Eh, bukan zaman korang, kalian tahu kan sebelum zaman ada smartphone, kita ada zamannya ada keypad tu, ah, dia follow tu, dia follow layout tu.
Saya membesar di zaman.
Yes, like Nokia. Zaman sensei punya phone, sensei sempat rasalah that kind of phone. I don't know, you guys. Pernah guna or not that kind of phone?
Saya, saya.
Oh, you guys also? Oh, okay, okay, okay. Maybe the, someone like Jasmine, fourteen years old, don't know how to use. How to use the keypad?
We are already, Rasha-san.
Yes, we are old already. Maybe because Jasmine is like, eh, touchscreen only, right? So sensei time ah, master sensei, not like that ah. Key present. Anyone else has any question? Tiga tiga satu kosong tu, eh, yes, yes, macam tu lah, lebih kalian macam tu lah. Sensei dia guna Sony Ericsson.
Motorola, Motorola.
Motorola yang boleh flip, you know, boleh tetap pak, macam tu.
Samsung.
Yes, oh, pergi mana phone tu? Okay, so anyone else have question? So for kanji actually eh, you guys can learn in groups, learn in groups, so that, eh, you will remember better. Okay, sensei actually ada satu ni sensei nak share. Kalau siapa yang rasa susah nak hafal, eh, kanji for number? Eto. So you guys, if you guys see this, eh, what do you guys think this is? Ku ku, kita panggil ku ku. Ku ku. Kita panggil ku ku. What do you guys think this thing is?
Sifir.
Yes, sifir, timetable, eh, apa nama? Sifir in English eh, saya sebut.
Multiplication.
Multiplication table, yes. So you guys here, you guys can see eh ni. So ni nodang, eh, dadak dua, dua dadak dua eh. Ni ichi. Ga ni, ni ichi ga ni. Ni na, ni nin ga shi, ni dah macam susah lah pula, kau confess pula korang. Kenapa tiba ni guna nin? So, nadilah sensei aja, data lah data. Ni shi ga hachi. So ini cara dorang, from, cara dorang hafal timetable. So you guys boleh ambik ni sebagai. Nak tengok how to pronounce sang, roku. So dia guna ku eh, eh, tiba guna ku. Ju ni, ju gu. Kalau perasan, dia, dorang guna she, dorang tak guna yang. If counting, ju ni. Ju roku. Shi shi, ju roku. Shi shi, ju roku. Okay, interesting lah this one, if you guys want to follow lah. Benci lagi susah je, next, then, yeah. Okay. So like I said, learn in groups eh, learn in groups, so that tak confess. Yes, yes, sifir. Sebab, eh, bila you guys start learning in group, but like I said before. Eh, kanji, kanji has a lot of reading, right? Kanji has a lot of reading. So bila kanji has a lot of reading. Eh, you guys tak perlu pun belajar semua kanji punya reading tu. Eh, semua, contoh, macam. So kanji ni actually one of the kanji yang paling banyak ada sebutan. Macam you guys can see it in my screen. Nama, we have nama, nama. So nama. This one, nama. So nama means raw. So kita guna terbila, nama tamagok, eh, nama nikuk, nama tamagok, raw eh. Nama.
Nama sushi.
Yes, nama sushi, so sushi semua nama. So nama sakana tu semua nama. And then it can also be pronounced as ski. And then can also be here ubu, banyaklah, se show. Se show ni usually we learn. Sensei, gaku se. Eh, itu se. But when we use another show. Uh to se. But when we use another sho, sho for example, is shou ken me, is shou ken me. So you guys can see here, these are all the own reading, the Chinese reading, ada dua je kan say dengan sho. But the kun reading, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eh banyak. So all of this actually depends on the uh context. The meaning is going to be different. So that's why you must learn kanji in context. Because uh for example, ikasu, ikasu wine. The one pronounced as ikasu. I think kanji tu, N one punya kanji. I'm not sure. Kita tak tahu sebab N one can't do. But the Sisap Sisai, this one is uh N one punya kanji. So nanti you guys are going to learn ah. So sebab tu kena belajar in groups. Macam tadi kita belajar wine, the numbers, ichi kara ju. And then we learn, getz yo bi kara ni chi yo bi. So that's why we need to learn this in group. Okay, Sisai apa nama apps ni? Uh imiwa. Imiwa. Imiwa eh, if you guys know Japanese eh, imi, imi maksud dia maksud dia apa, imi. I'm, I'm, imi, imi, what does imi mean?
Meaning.
Yes, imi maksud dia maksud, meaning eh. Imiwa dia macam maksud dia apa? Dia macam dia main tu lah. Imiwa dia main words dia. Dan korang tahu eh, kalau nak tanya soalan, uh you guys can just put wa at the back and then macam intonation, but macam soalan. For example, onamae wa. Onamae wa, what is, what are you, what are your name eh? Onamae wa. Eh, okuni wa, ah negara mana? Okuni wa, dia macam soalan. Imiwa, sama macam imiwa ni, imiwa soalan ke? Imiwa, is me. Okay, so I think that's all from me today. Hi, ada lagi soalan? Sisai saya ada kawan je pun, tapi dia lama tak chat, ayah apa yang soalan tu start conversation. Oh cakap je, hisashiburi des. Hisashiburi des, ni macam dalamnya tak jumpa, dalamnya tak cakap, dalamnya tak jumpa. Hisashiburi des, genki deska? Cakap je tu je. Hisashiburi des, genki deska? And then nanti dia jawab ah, betul, mungkin chat-chat lah, cakap lah, olympic, mentera ke? Oh, bersama wa dengan ga dari penggunaan. Actually, someone pernah tanya soalan ni, wa dengan ga ni. Uh dia macam ni, kalau you guys, as you guys learn, dia punya uh penggunaan uh interchangeably. Maksudnya dua-dua certain time, certain context, dua-dua boleh guna. But uh paling senang, paling simple punya explanation. Wa wa kita cakap pasal the subject. Okay, last ni habis berapa? Dah bila, sebanyak ya. Dah bila, just uh I'm just uh answering the questions by everyone. So, Sisai, contoh, contoh eh, kini dia. So then eh watashi wa eh nuru des. So they emphasize in uh words before before wa, before wa, watashi, watashi. Ayam nuru, tapi kalau ga eh watashi ga nuru des. Jadi korang macam ni eh. Emphasize on this, nuru des. Tapi selalunya kalau jawab macam ni, watashi wa nuru des, watashi ga nuru des, watashi ga. So generally, kalau kita guna context macam ni rusak sikit, tapi jadi eh, context watashi ga nuru des. Ni macam ada, so ga is to emphasize, yes, yes, that's right. Watashi wa ni, uh actually kalau, contoh eh, macam watashi wa nuru des ni, watashi wa ni tak ada, macam apa? Watashi wa ni tak ada, macam apa? Nuru des, you okay. Jadi kita nak cakap, oh nuru des ni subject belong to watashi. So what, the subject is watashi. Tapi watashi ga nuru des ni selalunya kalau kita jawab macam ni, it's like I'm asking a question and then I answer. Watashi ga nuru des. Contohnya uh sebagai con- context, uh siapa yang pecahkan pasu ni? Semua diam. Waduh, Sisai jawab, uh, watashi, watashi ga yarimashita. Watashi ga yarimashita, macam tu lah. Yes, yes, yes. Betul, betul. So, so, so. So this, this one actually uh first, sebab tu kita sebelum guna belajar, kita akan guna wa dulu. So later kita akan add contoh macam. Okey, Sisai bagi contoh lagi satu eh. Sisai terluka tadi eh, uh, nani ga suki deska? Eh, betul, gini dah gana. Hmm. Nani ga suki deska? Ah, okay, okay, ah, okay, wakata. Uh, kim ga suki. Kim ga suki des. Ataupun kim ga suki, apa maksud dia? Kimi kimino na. So you uh direct answer eh, I like you, I like you, kim ga suki des. So kalau macam ni kita guna ga eh. Wa dalam konteks ni emang tak luji eh, so kim ga suki des. Contoh apa-apa yang belakang dia suki, macam feeling eh, suki, kirai apa lagi, kirai uh, Sisai tak ingat eh, Sisai ingat tu je. Contoh macam tu kita semua ga feeling, kimochi.
Recording.
Okay eh, uh jadi siapa tu gudes? Maksudnya kalau contohnya ada orang tanya dua benda, contoh which one is water? Tambahan tu kena guna ga untuk jawab ke? Uh, docira, docira ga, doci ga eh doci ga eh mizu deska? Cocira des, kuchi des. Kore ga mizu des. So, so, ga. Okay, first eh, guna-guna nak tanya which one is water? Bila kita nak tanya soalan tu pun kita takkan tanya kita takkan guna wa dekat belakang. Contohnya docira, ini semua uh apa namanya, perkataan untuk tanya soalan ah, wish. Dorek. Dorek ni pun wish juga, wish tak ada. Ataupun dokok, macam ni pendekan, dokok, dokok deska? Ataupun nan. Kita tak, kita takkan tambah wow, first dekat benda-benda soalan ni. Tak boleh guna wa. So kita guna ga. Nani ga suki deska? Kita tak tanya, nami wa suki deska? Nani ga suki deska? Sebab tu bila jawab pun, kita jawab, ah, macam tu eh oka sang ga suki des. Tiba-tiba tak kubap kata, oka sang ga suki des. Nani ga suki deska? Eh, kuda monoga, tabi monoga suki des. I like food. Sushi ga suki des. Okay, menjawab soalan tak? Atika. So nanti, this guy, this time grammar nanti, dan sikit, grammar nanti syuar kita akan belajar in the future. Sisai akan guna grammar from J L P T N five. Sisai plan to use uh J L P T N five. So nanti maybe, okay. So nanti maybe Sisai we try. Sebab Sisai prefer guna J L P T. Sebab later if you guys want to they say if you guys want to, you know, take J L P T test it will be, you know, useful lah for your future. So I know that certain language, tuition, tuition language center they have their own certificate, right? But if you guys want to, you know, learn uh to get a job or apply for a university in Japan, those kind of certificate would not be helpful lah. Because usually they will ask for J L P T. So that's why Sisai will like to use. Sisai, actually, dia letak dalam the Google Drive. Eto. So it is let there guys, J L P T material, so letak satu tu pun, N five. Yang ada Vietnam tu. So nanti we will follow this lah, later if I, kenapa tak dibuka eh? So, nyonggo so matemat. So I like this book sebab dia guna sehari you use two page and then boleh belajar dalam enam bulan, enam minggu lah, mengikut kata berserah lah. So like, one day one day, so dia punya cara, so first ada ni, one, so tengok, like, like this like this kanji pun dia belajar kanji in group. Ichi ni chi me, onamae wa, onamae wa. So we don't use so then you learn, like, people guna wa, and so nanti Sisai dah ingat tu, okuni wa, docira deska? Yes, macam ni lah. So for one day, you learn this kanji. Semua kanji macam dia letak. And then kita jawab soalan. So later we will try use this lah. And then the next day, second, second week, a second week pelak, second day. Sisai nak follow this lah, after. Um, bila uh what is the J L P T level to work in Japan? So actually it depends, like Sisai said before, if you go there and you be uh jet, I think jet stand for, you know, yang aja-aja English tu kan. So as judge English, you don't need J L P T level. And then if you have specialty like, since I said before, I T, I T specialty uh entry also enough, entry pun cukup. Or if you guys are an expert uh so if you work in Ja- in Malaysia and then your company send you to Japan. So yeah, time to, thank you, because your company send you, right? So it doesn't matter what your J L P T level is. Actually quite common, for example in uh city like Tokyo, uh if you work at M N C, the J L P T pun okay. How to access Google Drive? Ada dalam PIN, dalam kuat telegram, actually. Yes, Sisai bagi, ya, dalam, eh, how to share, share. Eto, copy. Sisai apa semua kanji dulu ke? Baru-baru belajar game atau? Sisai belajar kanji and why also learn grammar? Betul, Sisai kata bila belajar kanji, betul belajar sekali dengan game apa? Belajar dengan textbook. So when you learn, like this one eh, otone ga, hitori tok, kodomoga, futari mas. So you learn both. Tapi this time, uh this book cuma focus on kanji duduk lah. Otone ga, hitori tok, kodomoga, futari mas. Anu ito wa, jimsan no otosa. So later you will learn. So later nanti kita try belajar from this. So they're more organized lah, organized. So I like using textbook because it's more organized. And follows syllabus also. So this is actually uh similar with how J L P T test uh looks like lah. Sebab memang dia ada istam, jadi dia akan underline and then you guys need to answer the correct reading. Is it hitori, is it hitari, is it futori, is it futari, is futari? Okay, so any more question? Is that so, okay eh? So there question nanti boleh Sisai kalau tidak sang belajar dalam bidang otomotif, kena belajar tu tu? Automotif eh, uh in master or degree level? Master or degree level? Master. Usually eh, kalau master, because you are going to do research master in PhD, uh tak ada Japanese also okay. Tapi you kena cari uh university yang ada English program lah. Kalau kena Japanese program, masa sebab automotive in Japanese, they, they have their own stem in Japanese, macam yang budak-budak sekarang, Sisai di student. There's a teaching for Japanese proprietary program. So they learn physics, chemist, semua in Japanese. Even English, if you guys go, uh go to Japan lah, even English is not in Japanese. So itu kah, to show up for Sisai. Okay, so for master and PhD doesn't matter. Uh I have my senpai, quite a lot of my senpai who come here to Japan. Uh they did their research in Japan, they don't know how to speak Japanese. Quite a lot. And then they will ask me how to read this, read this. Sebab nak, jadi nak guna Amazon. Amazon is like, you know, shopping eh. And then dia orang tak ada kat rumah. So bila tak ada kat rumah, Amazon will give this one sheet. So boleh call dia balik, so then they can send back the item. So dia, so dia cakap tak tahu nak guna ni. So Sisai pun terlalu plastik kan tu je. Okay, okay, anyone else have any question? Kalau ada question lagi, nanti boleh tanya edit group eh. Nanti recording ni Sisai akan letak dalam YouTube. Don't worry. Hi, okey des ne.
Okey deh.
Okey des. Deu aishita, Sisai akan white quiz, yang kita belajar di ni je lah.
Okay.
Deu wa mata, mata, rakshi des ne. Hi, oyasumi, oyasumi nasai.
Rashia san, ayah.
Oyasumi nasai, nasai. Oyasumi nasai.
Oyasumi, Sisai.